We're good? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 3, 2023, regular meeting of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. We call that meeting to order at this time. I'm going to ask, first of all, read our disclaimer. This agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. We call this meeting to order at this time. We're going to ask Mr. Freddie Williams if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. After that, I'm asking everybody to remain standing for a few moments of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, President Williams. The first moment of silence this evening is for Dr. Edith Shapiro. Edith Shapiro was recognized as an expert in the field of reading on both a local, state, and national level. Dr. Shapiro's home school was Carter, then at the time, McCannstown, of course. Dr. Shapiro worked in the district for 25 years. She began her career in 1968. In addition to working with children, Dr. Shapiro also taught college and in-service courses. And just to note, her husband Leon was a guidance counselor at Middletown High School. And interestingly enough, one of Dr. Shapiro's ideas, again coming into fore, was that parents should read to their children at a very, very young age and keep reading with and to their children. Very dedicated, I served on committees with Dr. Shapiro, just one nicest person you ever want to meet. The second moment of silence this evening is for Samuel Quimby, Samuel Lambert Quimby. Again, I worked with Sam for many years. He was a star athlete, graduated from Washington High School, lettered in four sports, served his nation as a member of the U.S. Navy. Very calm type of individual. If I may read, please. Sam was well-liked and respected friend to the athlelic and educational community throughout the county for his entire life. Navy veteran, graduated from Orange County Community College, the University of Southern Connecticut. He also taught at Orange County Community College, as well as in the district, he taught physical education in the district. And the final moment of silence this evening, not an employee of the district, but a big supporter of education in Middletown School District, Barbara Bedell. Worked for 46 years for the Middletown Times Herald Record. She always spotlighted the very positive events happening in the district for many, many years. Additionally, Barbara would come over and she would teach a class in journalism, answer questions about how it was working in a newspaper. And also, many, many students learned various writing techniques from Barbara. So, all these people contributed in one way or the other to not only our educational community, but to the Middletown community and to the country. So, please remember them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. I want to say this before we go on, even with these moments of silence, is that many of us are Middletown icons are passing away. And while death happens every day, we never want to get used to it. We never want to get used to it, but we do want to make sure that we honor all of those that paved the pathway for us to get to where we do. So, thank you, Mr. Perino, for always handling these moments of silence, as we remember those that contributed to where we are now. No them, no us. So, thank you. Moving on, mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. Mr. Byson, please.
Thank you, Pastor. The mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, we strive to provide physically sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Byson. Roll call. This is Monsieur Ray.
Mrs. Blumenow. Mr. Estrada. Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett. Ms. Tobiasin. Mr. Freddie Williams. Pastor Williams.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Thank you. Moving on, I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, please.
Second on that.
Moved and seconded, Mrs. Blumenow, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. I need a motion for the approval of the reorganization meeting minutes, July 6, 2023, please.
Second on that.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mrs. Blumenow. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. I need a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 6, 2023, please.
Don't move.
I heard Mr. Estrada and seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Now, I need a motion for the approval of the special meetings minutes from July 13, 2023.
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mrs. Blumenow. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you. Now, I entertain a motion for the approval of our personnel-only board workshop meeting minutes from July 20, 2023. Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mrs. Blumenow. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Now, I entertain a motion for, yes, thank you, a motion for the approval of the special meetings minutes, July 25, 2023.
Second on that.
Moved by Mr. Estrada, seconded by Mrs. Blumenow. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Moving on to our action items. There are nothing for the administrative personnel memorandum tonight, so we will move on to action item B. Need a motion, please, for the approval of Personnel Memorandum 3B, numbers 1 through 17, instructional. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion?
Just a quick question for the superintendent. How's hiring? I know in the past few years, because of COVID and everything, we've had a lot of trouble, just the whole country, in regards to hiring. How's our hiring going so far this year for the new school year?
Yeah, thank you for giving me an opportunity to share about that. We've been really busy hiring and are doing really well, right on track. There are still some of those positions that are just traditionally hard to fill, they're a specialized area that we're still seeing challenges with. Some of those would be like Spanish-language educators. So, it's not only us struggling with those, but districts across the county and the state. But we are pretty on track and looking forward to another opportunity to approve personnel later in the month.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See and none, all in favor? Opposed? It so passes. Action item C, Approval of Personnel Memorandum 3C, numbers 1 through 10, non-instructional. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Estrada, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Moving on to action item D, Approval of Financial Memorandum 4D, number 1 through 6. Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mr. Estrada. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. It passes. Moving on to action item E, Approval, I need a motion for the approval of Special Services Memorandum 2E, numbers 1 and 2.
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, I think it was, and seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. Need a motion for the approval, action item F, Approval of Change Orders 2F, numbers 1 and 2, please. Moved by Mr. Perino. Seconded by Mrs. Blumenow. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Pastor Williams, yeah, the change order is pretty well straightforward, since I'm on that committee. Drainage and grading revisions to the Maple Hill Playground, removal and disposal of underground concrete in the courtyard, and marking the utility lines, which is required actually by law. The other change order concerns our newest, most innovative project, the geothermal project at the twin, and install an additional pressure gauge and sensor ports in the manifold of the geothermal piping. So, that's it. This, of course, is, I think we're probably the leader in this geothermal, as far as educational facilities go, one of the leaders. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's about it for the change orders.
Thank you, sir.
Would it be possible for the superintendent just to leave any concerns in the public regarding construction so far to, as of August 3?
Yes.
To quell any rumors that might be out there in the community?
Yeah, again, thank you for that opportunity. We are feeling really confident that we're right on track at this point, even despite the terrible weather that we had for a two-to-three-week sprint there. The geothermal project is right on target in terms of the number of wells that are completed to this point, in terms of how many we have to complete. We've had great progress with the parent guardian caregiver drop-off loop that is at the main front side of Twin Towers, as well as the new bus drop-off loop that is on the side of Twin Towers. It'll move from the bottom of the hill to the side of the building. And both of those are progressing along nicely. We had an opportunity to have Mid-City in and see the progress, test their buses to ensure that there'll be no issues with bus arrival and the setup. So, we are right on track. We anticipate Twin Towers opening. There is going to be no need to shift the Twin Towers scholars to another alternate middle school or create a split schedule for middle schoolers. Twin Towers will be open and will be ready for the first day of school.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. We've had the discussion. All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. Action item G, Approval of Update to the 2023-2024 Board of Education Calendar. Moved by Mr. Freddie Williams, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? Would you mind just clarifying what that was?
Yeah, the update to the board calendar for the public's information is so that we could align our May meetings with the New York State Education Department's required meeting timelines for the school budget.
Thank you very much. We've had discussion. All in favor? Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Moving on to our board member recognitions and community updates. I don't think there are any particular recognitions tonight, so we're going to, we're just going to go around the table with our board member updates. I'll start with Mr. Estrada tonight.
Mine will be quick. I just want to make a shout-out to all of the employees who have stepped up to the plate to work during the summer, whether it be Buildings and Grounds or Student Support. Also, the Middletown Summer Basketball League, which is every Tuesday, continues to do great things out in Monhegan, bringing in people from other areas of the county, as well as Rockland County, coming in, and Dutchess County. And it's gone very well. And I know Mitch and Freddie might be talking about their basketball camps as well during their roundtable, but I'm hearing great things. And I give kudos to the district for providing summer stuff for our students to do throughout July and August. I think it's a testament to how great of a community we have. That's it.
Estrada. Mr. Williams.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of like what Ed was saying, just want to commend all the coaches and counselors, the basketball league that has been done by Jim Kelly, excellent job, the basketball league, also the NYSE with Fox and Everton, the basketball camp by Building Legends, that's John John Merchant, basketball camp YMCA, Kevin Dorales, Parks and Rec, and YMCA camps, and all the school district programs. So, if I left anybody out, please, my apologies, but I just see the kids just getting involved with so much things this summer here in Middletown, and I think it's just great, just the socializing and just the encouraging and just the competition. So, if you're not doing anything, please go out, because we have a lot of things going on here in Middletown. Definitely one, Middletown, the educators, even the people, the kids that are going to summer school and supporting them and encouragement from them that are working real hard during the summer. You know, so I feel really good about what's going on here in Middletown this summer, and I just want to encourage everybody.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Blumenow. Thank you. Mr. Rett.
I just want to reiterate the programs around the city. It's been very active. We had some really good opportunities for kids to get out and just enjoy themselves. One program I was involved in called Love Our City, I hosted that program. It was supported by Garcia's, as well as Second Baptist Church and a couple other organizations, Oars, which was a gentleman, Roland Smith, as well as Pam Hilton. Her program is God's Hearts for Women. But it was a great opportunity for people to get out. You know, we had a barbecue, we had blow-up machines for the kids to play, we had give-outs, you know, as well as backpacks and things of that nature. We had entertainment as well. And so, again, that was, it was great being a part of that. Also, again, I was involved with, I stopped by a couple of the sports programs around the city. Middletown School Basketball Program, just hosted by Freddie, among others. It was really good to be a part of that and support them with that as well. There was quite a few things going on. I also was part of the fair, took the family out to the fair, so a lot of community things, saw a lot of kids out there as well. Let me see, I had something else. Well, of course, we all support, quite a few of us supported the Night Out, yeah, Night Out Against Crime. And that was also well-attended, a lot of people out, a lot of energy. And again, you know, the city's really bubbling, and what's important is the ideal, an opportunity to have community opportunities where the kids can get out, as well as their parents, and they can mingle together and talk in a peaceful and productive environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Perino.
Yeah, could you put that, do we have that announcement on the program on the 19th that we can put up on the screen? Well, while we're doing that, the Elks Club, August 19, 2023, of course, this year, from 9 to 12, there's going to be a distribution, to write up there, distribution of school supplies and a free breakfast. The point is that the school supplies, the first hundred students will receive school supplies, and it's not limited only to elementary, but elementary, middle school, and high school students. So, that's August 19, free breakfast. Now, the students must be accompanied, the children must be accompanied by an adult and one backpack per individual. So, it's a good, great program. So, come on up Saturday, August 19, joy of breakfast, and maybe get a backpack. So, good enough. The other announcement, while I have a little bit of time, I want to give a shout-out to Alderman Kleiner and the Middletown historian, Peter Lascaris. They met with Middletown High School instructors, Rachel Conch, Brittany Tresh, and student MHS Junior, Santiago Martinez, who is completing a project on Middletown history in order to obtain the SEAL of Civil Readiness. It was a very, very productive afternoon. And just to mention, the SEAL of Civic Readiness, it's a formal recognition from New York State that a student has attained a level of proficiency in terms of civic knowledge, civic skills, and civic experience. So, this is the first year that the project was in effect. And I believe last summer, I recommended that to Mrs. Creedon, and she most definitely initiated that. And it was really a good experience for that student and learning a little bit about Middletown history and with a goal of to obtain this state-designated SEAL. So, I don't want to start anything else right now, because I don't have that much time, so I'm done then. Thank you, John.
Mr. Byson.
Thank you, Pastor. I just want to say, we hear a lot about our security and our Buildings and Grounds staff. This evening, I had a little setback in that I lost a stone out of a ring that was my mom's. I had no intentions that I would ever find it. However, Paul Norton, one of our staff, found the stone.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
And all I can say to Paul is that from the bottom of my heart, I am internally grateful, because there was a lot of sentimental value with that ring. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. It just shows what we have in this district and how compassionate and understanding they can be. So, thank you.
Yep. That's diligence.
Two sign will extend the crack.
That's diligence.
And it's a little, it's not a big stone at all, so.
That's real diligence, that's looking, that's good eyesight.
Again, thank you. And I'll see Paul on the side, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byson. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Thank you. I want to give a special thanks to the Middletown Athletics, Superintendent Creedon and the District of Middletown for, in reference to the Middletown New Sports Basketball League that we have going on at Monhegan Middle School. We have over about 140 kids involved in the district. We have 12 teams, volunteer coaches. It's come together organically, and we're truly grateful. Myself, Everton Brown, Mitchell Williams, we're heading the ship with the league. And we learned a lot from the Varsity League that was started by Jim Kelly. Initially, it was last year, right? And so, that's amazing. It's an amazing program. And then, we thought, you know, maybe something for the younger kids to kind of get to that point, build up to that point. So, it's been great. Our first initial year, like I said, everybody involved, from the parents and kids and volunteer coaches and the security, Buildings and Grounds, everybody's like bought in, and it's an amazing program. It's been a blessing. We're coming up on our last week, this coming Monday and Wednesday. So, I'll have some pictures and videos to present of our next board meeting. And also, I want to give information on the It Takes a Village Back to School BBQ, September 9. We are at Davich Park from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. I want to thank myself and Mitchell initiated the It Takes a Village BBQ, and this is 2021. Now, we're on 2020, this is our third one. Want to thank the city of Middletown, the City of Middletown Police Department, Middletown School District, Mid-City Transit, Parks and Recreation, and there's a lot of layers to it, a lot of hands are helping this lift. And we're just super grateful. Also, next meeting, I'll have a visual flyer of the event and all the activities, a lot of activities. Last year, we had close to 3,000 people, as opposed to the first year, 2021, we had about 500. So, you see it's growing intensely, and that's no, there's no irony in that with all the helping hands that are coming forth. So, we're very excited about that. So, I have some material on that also the next meeting. And all the programs throughout the district are great, amazing. I'm excited for my son, a little more than he's excited, for the Accelerated Math Program Camp that starts on the 14th of August. And I got that call early in the morning, and he got the email. And it was like one of the most exciting calls I've had, right? Sports are one thing, but when you're in the classroom and you're in accelerated programs and that, we offer that. A lot of districts don't even offer that, you know what I mean? So, that was a great thing. So, the programs throughout the district are amazing. I'm just very excited about where we're at in the district and the direction we're going. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Well, firstly, I want to, Mr. Rett mentioned the Night Out Against Crime, which is a national event. Many municipalities all over the country come together on that particular night, that first Tuesday in August, for this event that is family-oriented. I had the privilege of stopping in again on Middletown. And then, after being at Middletown, we took some time and went over to the town of Walkhill and was there with them. There's so many families in both places, so many different groups, and so many different supports that were out there, many agencies that were out there, providing support, information for families that are in need, families that need counseling, families, whatever it is, food bank, everything, recap, so many different wonderful resources that we have in this area were out at these particular events. They were visited by many of our local elected officials, the county legislators, town and village, of course, town and village boards, but also our county supervisor and as well as our state senator and others that were there. So, it was a wonderful show and a wonderful opportunity to come out and celebrate and be with family, be with people, be with the people that is in your community. So, and I enjoy those events, because I think that the one thing that we so often forget is that we're all in this same boat together. And so, we have to learn how to celebrate together so many of the wonderful accomplishments and still be able to deal with some of the challenges that we have. But I'm finding that when we can focus on, focus on the wonderful accomplishments, it makes it easier for us to work together in order to face the challenges that we have to face. Outside of that, there's some really good things. The next meeting, myself, Mr. Rett, Mr. Estrada, will be doing a presentation about the LEA Convention, Leadership in Education, NISBA Convention or Conference that we went to on last week, Friday and Saturday. I was there an extra day, because I also happen to be privileged to sit on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for New York State School Boards Association. And there's so many other things that are coming down the line. So, at the next meeting, we'll be making a report to the board and to the community. So at the next meeting, we'll be making a report to the board and to the community about that particular conference. But good news coming out of that was on Thursday morning, Thursday morning, as I was going down to the lobby, I ran into Regent Wills, who is our area regent, who was here in Middletown just a few weeks ago, and had a wonderful conversation with her, went back to my room, and got a call from Commissioner Betty Rosa. And Commissioner Rosa asked me if I could come down and just hang out and talk to her for a little while, we had the opportunity to talk and to chat, and she is so impressed with Middletown that they have determined that they would like to come to Middletown for First Bell on the first day of school in Middletown. So, we're excited, it would be Commissioner Rosa, her staff, chancellor, the chancellor, the Board of Regents, some others, and there's a possibility that we will, possibility that we will also be hearing from the governor being here too. So it's a big exciting day, a big exciting opportunity for Middletown. The superintendent and her staff will be working out the logistics on all of that because it will be a, a challenge to work out the logistics, but those are the things that's happening for Middletown. We are, we, we, Middletown is on the map, Middletown is on the map. So, thank you, that's all, that's all I have to say about that. Moving on, public participation, opportunity to address. Public participation is limited to four minutes per speaker, and individual is not permitted to give their time to another individual. Is there, is there anybody tonight that would like to address the board? Well, seeing none, we'll move on. If there are any letters, the letters are, will, are being, are posted to board docs. So, thank you. Moving on now to our superintendent's updates, I turn you into the hand of our superintendent, Mrs. Amy Creedon.
Thank you so much, President Williams. Before we dive into the special presentation that we have this evening for our board and school community, I just want to take a quick minute to acknowledge the incredible programming that took place last night at Presidential Park, put together by the really talented curriculum instruction team, which includes administrators and educators from a variety of levels across the district. Last night, they put on a program that just over 90 families had registered to attend. There were six different presentations. Families arrived, had an opportunity to experience a healthy balance between something sweet and some local fruit, enjoy a snack. Young people had an opportunity to come with their families and watch a movie, and then the adults got to cycle through six different presentations. All of the presentations were available in English and in Spanish, and covered topics like healthy meals, and what it looks like for our young people to participate in our no-cost pre-fuel and refuel meal system inside the district. Communication tools and resources for families, so provided bits of information about how we communicate with families and how we are seeking to hear from our families. Grading and assessment, next-gen standards, and what instruction in our classrooms looks like, a special section on life skills for our scholars, and a section on dental hygiene and the connection between dental health and academics. So it was a really robust evening, it went from 6:00 until 8:30. And again, all of the presentations from last night are available if you didn't get a chance to preregister for the event, available online in English and Spanish. There is a second offering of the event, which will take place this coming Tuesday, August 8th, at 6:00 PM at Presidential Park. I promise you, if you didn't get a chance to preregister and attend last night, it's not something that you want to miss. Even if you can't stay for the whole two hours, come and attend as many sessions as you can, I promise you won't be disappointed. So, another quick update is we are pleased to have been invited by the Run for Downtown Committee to join their event, and so we're partnering with them on August 19th to host the first-ever sensory component of the Run for Downtown event. So it'll be a great opportunity for our Middletown team to be present at a longstanding event in this community that's so well-respected and enjoyed. We get to be a little part of it, host a walk for our young people and their families, and have a sensory station set up. So if you are around on August 19th, please feel free to drop down and join us at that special event. And all of the funds raised go to projects that are put on by the Run for Downtown Committee inside the city, so really great event. And so now we're going to get to tonight's presentation, want to acknowledge that we have with us tonight, Mrs. Elizabeth Bowler and Mrs. Tiffany Hall, and they're joined here tonight by their families, which I think is so incredibly special because sometimes we forget that our administrators are people outside of these buildings, and we get to meet their young people, and it's also really special for their young people to see their moms in roles that are making a difference in this community and in public education. So I love that they're here, joining us and celebrating, you know, their expertise in this area. So thank you, Mrs. Bowler and Mrs. Hall, for being ready to share with the community tonight how we are going to dig in and make our mark on foundational literacy skills
Yeah. Vesh, Vesh is probably running to get, to get you guys.
That was just the warm-up.
It was.
Here he comes. Oh, give her one of those mics. We, we, we could have done that, Vesh, you didn't have to run all the way upstairs for that. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah. Now we got it. All right, woo, all right. So, reading research shows that there are two processes happening in your brain simultaneously to create skilled reading. These are comprehension and word recognition. Reading research.
So, our goal is to create a durable foundation and strengthen the role. So we're looking at word recognition, and for our scholars to be successful across disciplines. While reflecting on our instructional programming, we noticed that there was a need for more explicit systematic instruction in word recognition. Therefore, we are implementing HEGREDE and Foundations. Okay, so just breaking down, as we look at the three components, phonological awareness, we know is about how we manipulate sounds, in a nutshell, and when we look at decoding, we're really looking at how we apply these sounds. So, just, I like to look at decoding as letters teaming up to make a word. And finally, we have sight word recognition, which is how fast a scholar can basically recall a word, is usually around eight tenths of a second. So now, as we look at, what are these programs? So Foundations is a multi-sensory and systematic phon expelling and writing, handwriting program, and what I love most about it is that it affects all modalities, all modalities. So scholars have that ability to work with the manipulatives, with the hands-on and tactile tiles, and see it visually and recall.
So the other program is HEGREDE, and that is a multi-sensory and a systematic phonological and phonemic awareness program. What we love about this program is that it spiraled everyday lessons that incorporate a kinesthetic approach.
So we're going to give you a small little video of Foundations and what it looks like in the classroom. My, I go E, right? X-box.
X-box.
N-nut.
N-nut.
M-man.
M-man.
L-lam-ol.
L-lam-ol.
T-tot.
T-tot.
T-h-stump.
T-h-stump.
Seek. Okay, so that was just a small glimpse of, of what it entails.
So, what you actually just saw was a little portion, it's one of, a piece of Foundations, where you saw the key words on a card, and the key words are helping the scholars with the connection to those letters and sounds, and so they're practicing that and making sure that the sounds are, are said correctly. So, next that we wanted to talk about is our five-year plan. We actually started the implementation this year, Mrs. Adoma shared that with you at the beginning of the year regarding our AIS and Special Education Programs, implementing Foundations and Just Words through our Tier Two programming. So, we got to see some really great results with that. We incorporated this summer as our reading intervention plan for our elementary scholars. And with that, next year, we will be now implementing it as our core programs for pre-K through first grade for Foundations, and then for pre-K through second grade, we're going to implement HEGREDE. In the upper grades for three through five, Birch the Gap is a HEGREDE program, and it's an intervention program for phonemic awareness and phonological awareness that we will be giving to our AIS scholars and our kids who are in need of that skill. The following year, we will then be bringing in to our second grade core program is Foundations, as well as our third grade Wilson. Wilson is a Tier Three program regarding word recognition program, and so this is a program that if we're seeing our scholars struggling still with these skills, that they would then go into this program. For 2025, 26 school year, we will now be incorporating for grade three Foundations, as well as fourth grade and fifth grade Wilson, and in 2026, 27, we'll be breathing and happy, smiling, we will be in full implementation.
So, some of our summer work that we started involved training teachers, actually looking through the programs, and at the end of August, we're going to give teachers the opportunity to kind of like dive a little deeper and preview the program, and we're really excited and looking forward to this school year.
I just want to add, before we open up to questions, that, you know, what we are doing is building on a long history of targeted literacy instruction that Middletown has developed, and what we're not doing is taking all that we worked for and discarding that, but instead, thinking about what we know and have learned over the years of implementation, and what we have seen as a result of the pandemic and school closures, and where our young people are at, and helping to identify what exactly they need. Just like when we do a capital improvement project, it's all contingent upon a solid foundation or base for any of the projects, and literacy development is no different. And so this program's target is to really build up that base so that our scholars can spiral through literacy development in a way that is going to be effective and that they'll feel success with. So this is not, you know, taking what we've done and just washing it away, but we're continuing to build on it. If we stayed doing exactly what we have been doing, right, that means we haven't learned anything, so we're changing with what we know instruction looks like now, and how resources have changed over time. Are there any questions by any board members?
First of all, I'm going to have to have my wife check my deodorant because I seem to have made all board members leave this side of the ta, of the table for some reason, and you're downwind, so. Anyway, thank you for the presentation, just a couple of questions. I saw that on, both on the Foundations and HEGREDE, that it includes the pre-K as the starting point, and I know that as just about every school district in the state, we outsource a lot of our pre-K education. How are the vendors that provide us with our pre-K involved in this process?
Hello. I've now like thinking it's not on, sorry. So our UPK programs work very closely with us. Throughout the year, we have actually, every month, we have professional development, but they're faculty meetings that we meet with the staff, and then we actually, about four, possibly five times, depending on that year, we will meet with all of the teachers all day long and provide them professional development. And so knowing that we've actually started some of the professional development with them at the end of last year, and we will be continuing that throughout. We also go into all of the schools, us as the instructional leaders team, and we do observations and walkthroughs in those buildings as well to all of our teachers. So that would be another support system that we would give them. We have actually gone into the buildings, as well as our totes to provide special, you know, professional development for them, so we can provide those throughout the year. So, that is one special piece to our UPK program, I feel, that we have a very close connection with all of our sites, and we work hand-in-hand with some other, I shouldn't say that, in some places, that's, they feel is very special to us, that we really give them that hands-on approach.
And I have two other small questions. One of the things that we've discussed is, even in just a couple of months that Curtis and I have been on the board with our other board members, is, you know, the, the village approach to including our parents at home. So is there any part of these programs that are teachable moments for our parents or our guardians back home that they can use these, these pointers at home instead of just inside the classroom?
Yes, absolutely, that's a great question. So, parents do have the opportunity, there's an at-home aspect for Foundations and HEGREDE, where they can extend the learning outside of the classroom. We also discuss preparing professional development around doing at-home activities and different types of enrichment that can extend the learning besides the core instruction that occurs in the classroom. So we definitely have that, and Foundations has that within the programming.
And then my last question, Mr. Perrino's favorite, is always about accountability of programs when we introduce them, and being able to track our successes with them. I, I see the five-year rollout, what is in your, in your head, the bars in each year that you want to see the district and the students show, where we can as a board start seeing results, that, you know, as bad as, it's not, it's not as easy as just getting results each year, but at least for us to understand as a board, how you're going to hold the programs accountable for results?
I can start it. So definitely through progress monitoring, we're going to do that in the classrooms at grade levels. grade levels and also ongoing assessments. So we're going to build and strengthen that foundation and extend that as we continue, like the trajectory of the program and being consistent in how we progress monitor, how we convene, how we look at data and how we really gear our instruction around supporting the needs of our scholars.
And I just wanted to add to it that one of the other pieces about that which makes Middletown so unique and it's really special that the board has given us this opportunity to test this theory of action is that the biggest factor for academic improvement is what's happening in the classroom. And so this board, you know, took a chance on our planning and has put in place, Mrs. Bowler is the instructional leader at Maple Hill Elementary, Maple Hill Annex, Mrs. Hall is at William Carter, and Mrs. Holbrook, who isn't here this evening but is part of this team, is at Presidential Park. And so what that enables that team to do is to get a really close eye on the instructional practices that are happening inside classrooms each day and take a little bit of that stress off of the building leader only so that they're focusing on operations and instruction and that team's focus is only instruction so that we're sure that we're maximizing the impact of every instructional moment that we have with their young people so that there's fidelity of implementation, right? They can do all the professional development they want and we can implement a great program, but if when the classroom door is closed, there isn't fidelity of implementation, we lose a little bit of traction. So we want to make sure that we get opportunities to amplify our incredible educators and support them with making sure that what's happening in the classroom is meeting, you know, the expectations of the programs as well.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, but I really liked the layout you have here, the five-year plan. You can see one of the particular literacy shifts, which is that staircase of complexity. You know, you can see that there's going to be some growth and that you can, and the kids can recognize their growth because they feel like they're developing more readability as they move on. Also, I see you kind of touched on the fact that you'll be doing beginning, mid-year, and end-year assessments to monitor that as well. So that's really fantastic. My question is, what are some of the other shifts you see that might add to this as they progress beyond your five-year plan?
So for us, we're hoping that we, when we really looked at our assessments and when we really looked at our data with our scholars, we were seeing that word recognition is a really, really big need, right? When you're looking at national data trends, you typically see that, you know, 90% of older failures in reading from middle school and high school is because of word recognition. And when we really started looking, we started to see that we had struggles for many different reasons. COVID is definitely one with the fact that kids were going to school every other day. But we even recognized that beforehand, that there are needs for word recognition. And so what we will see here, and we deeply believe that with this research-based programs that we are bringing in, that we will see our scholars each year becoming more and more confident. Yeah. Confident with their reading. With that, you're having, we're walking into the summer school rooms and you're hearing kids talking about diphthongs and like, it's so exciting and why, you know, this sound makes this and this. And they're really being thoughtful about our language. With that, from there, once we are starting to see, so we're going to have strong decoders or word recognition, right? Scholars, with that, we can't forget with, when you looked earlier, that there's a whole piece around comprehension. And so we will, from pre-K all the way up, which we've already invested, as you have known as the board, in many of our books and having those rich discussions with our scholars. But that is a place that we would be focusing a little bit more on, knowing, okay, so our scholars who hopefully through these programs and the fact that we're having Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, meaning going deeper into intervention in these programs by our fifth year, we would have tackled the word recognition. So we would start, really starting to think about our interventions around comprehension for those scholars who are struggling.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Good evening. Retaining to the video, what grade level was that?
That was kindergarten class.
That's awesome. I watched, I watched and the, you could hear a pin drop in between the engagement and that's super impressive. So I think you guys are doing an excellent job with this program. I see a lot of great things coming out of it. Yeah, I was, I was really taken back by that because seeing kids that age, you know, being so quiet and so engaged was super impressive. So that's awesome. That's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Perino.
Mr. Estrada said what I was going to say. I think to make this literacy program, any of the programs successful, you have to involve the parents. And in a moment of silence this evening, Dr. Shapiro always said that parents must be involved and parents should read with and to their children. And I also think we have to involve members of the community. As a matter of fact, my colleague Mitch Williams wrote a email saying perhaps a committee should be formed involving members of the community to promote literacy. And I would hope that we are working with Thraw Library, the children's library is very good. Did we supply any book lists this year to Thraw?
Yes.
And have we checked on that or are the students picking up on that? Because when I go in there, the children's room looks like it's filled. So we're making progress in that end. And with all you're doing, by the way, thank you again for the presentation, when do you expect to see a increase in our state test scores?
All right. Right, we're, yeah, we're just like tackling.
That's bottom lining.
Right.
Right. Absolutely. Thank you for that comment, Ms. Perino.
John, I was just beating around the bush before, but you got right to the point.
You got to the bottom line here, Eddie.
So of course, with all programs, we have to give time for implementation and we are expecting that as we build these foundational skills and we tighten that rope to make skill reading a success for our scholars, that we will see the trajectory over the years and across grade bands where we are moving into extending comprehension, analyzing literature. And again, once we have that strong basis, we definitely will see the success of our scholars.
And we would be, you know, excited to have an opportunity to share out the portfolio of items that we look at to determine proficiency for our young people in reading. We have made tremendous strides in what we know about kids, what we know they need and how they need to be assessed. And the state is such a large organization that they can oftentimes make shifts as quickly as smaller academic institutions can. So while we've changed with what we know needs to be assessed about reading, it doesn't mean that the state has shifted in that same manner. So we use the New York State Assessment as one component, but not the driving component. That is oftentimes data that we get far after we need to put in place supports to help instruction continue to move forward. So we rely more heavily on our district assessments, which are standard across the district as well as formative and summative assessments across each of the quarters. And then I also just wanted to add that we also do, the board allows us to support the Bookmobile that drives around town all summer long and provides books to our young people. So in addition to our partnership with Thraw Library, we actually use the Bookmobile, which is a partnership with Parks and Rec, to deliver books to kids at parks.
Guess who initiated that a couple of decades ago?
I wonder who.
I wonder who.
And just a little plug of this summer, we started our first.
Reading Around the World Program, where we look at books of different diverse backgrounds and the students engage in a nice intimate setting and being really reflective and intentional about the book selection. We really enjoyed that experience with the scholars. We had scholars really open up about traditional cultural things and they were able to have a nice treat reflective to the culture that they read about. So that was a wonderful experience.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitch Williams.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend you on that presentation. It was very thorough. Also commend you just on the, on the energy that you seem to have around this because that's important.
Yes.
You know, you have an energy like, no, we're going to win.
Yes.
And I like that. You know, as a coach, that's, that's important. You identify, identify the needs and then put the goals and put the objectives and those smart goals, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound. I'm paying attention to stuff like that. So it's intentional and that's what it's about. And like what Ms. Perino was just talking about, as far as myself and a lot of people in the community, we would just like to add on in any way that we can because we all want to win.
Right.
We are one Middletown and we all want to win. So whatever I could do as far as my part, I want to, I want to be, be involved and I'm about to action. We ain't going to talk about it. We're going to get busy. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for that.
So, well, I, you know, the thing about going last is that everyone always asks the good questions already, you know? I'm sorry, Paula. I was looking, I looked at you, I looked at you and I was like, Paula? Go ahead, Paula. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
One of the things I wanted to agree with Mr. Estrada on is the connection that we have with our pre-K, our pre-K programs because it is such a great opportunity to star our kids early and just get into those programs where, yeah, our pre-Ks are, you know, three, but a lot of them have these toddler programs and are using some of the, some of the tools even earlier. Can you talk about the support from the actual program that you get? Because I think that for me, when we invest in a program for, for our students, the connection from the publishers, the, you know, the implementers who are selling us this program and giving us the tools, what kind of support and ongoing support do you get?
Having it turning on, Tiffany has to keep reminding me to turn this on. So we actually have been trained with BOCs for foundations, well, foundations, Wilson program has worked with BOCs. And so we've had a number of trainings with our BOCs and they'll come in to support us. Hegarty as well has PD through them, which we have as the instructional team have taken. Both programs, which is also, part of it is because of COVID and they have just become advanced because of that, they had to do a lot through the computer, right? That they have, both of them, like this hub for all of the teachers that we have invested in that they can, all the teachers can actually look at the different lessons and have different resources, write to, like they can write foundations, a key person in foundations and they'll write them back. And so they do have a lot of support that we can use. A benefit we also have is because all of our AIS teachers were trained last year as well as us, that there, they can be a supportive tool to the teachers and as Mrs. Creedon said, that's our role too. But we have constant contacts, like we can call and they'll be there for us. So that is a really great benefit.
Yeah, it's not just a one and done.
Yeah, I was just going to add.
Here's the package, do it. It's ongoing.
Yeah.
Handholding if you need it.
And I just wanted to add that the Fun Hub has been a definitely resourceful tool because teachers are be able to go in, look at a daily, like explicit lesson and really look and assign specific at-home activities for the scholar. So I feel like that's really like looking, making a true diagnostic, looking at data and saying, okay, this is what this particular scholar needs. And that again extends to what you asked about the at-home resources.
That's great.
And it's user-friendly.
And I feel like there's some, you know, teaching has come so far, you know, and, and almost in a very short time because of technology and how we have the, the tools to get that, to get that information, that for teachers who are using something that's already proven, it's, it's so helpful because, you know, for teachers, just every day to, you know, come up with new and, and it's important for us to have creative teachers who are also giving feedback. And I assume that there's room for feedback, but to have those tools in place and that it's proven and it's going to work, that is, that's great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you kind of touched on this, but again, are there ongoing workshops or trainings for parents so that they can help their children at home in some way, shape, or capacity?
So that's actually something that we discussed with Mrs. Creedon. Regarding throughout the year, we will be providing support to parents, we'll be having workshops with the parents because we know that we're one family, right? We're going to be way more successful when we're all connected. And so we'll be giving supporting tools that parents could do at home, right? Even like the sample, the cards that they can do in teaching them and different strategies. So absolutely, that is something that we discussed that will happen next year.
Thank you very much.
And Tuesday is our second installment of the Family Academy. So join us at 6:00 PM at Presidential Park because they went into, not foundations specifically, but they teed up families in terms of what to expect. How do I progress monitor? How do I sign up for Infinite Campus? What does instruction in my classroom look like? What are healthy eating choices, right? So that is exactly what we want to do by providing multiple opportunities for our families to get inside our schools and see our programming and experience it themselves.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I just, I just want to say again, I was saying, I was saying that the thing about going last is that all the questions that you had in your mind, everyone else asked. So most of my questions have been, have been answered. But what I, what I so appreciate about this program and what you all are doing is, is that, to Coach Mitch's point, is that it is, it is so intentional in, in, in the way that it's moving and it's providing, it's providing rich outcomes at the end of everything. Mrs. Blumenau just said something that really kind of resonated with me, especially based, and I'm not going to say a whole lot about it because we're going to give our, our presentation about the LEED convention at the next board meeting, but about the changing of teaching. And I think that one of the things with COVID is that not only did it change teaching, but it changed the way that people receive. It changed the way that society itself operates. And so Middletown has been really good over the years at being ahead of the curve. And, you know, been really good at, at being proactive and innovative in the things that we do and not waiting for just the guidelines that, that the state brings down to, to what you said a little bit earlier. And that's not just with this, but that's with everything, everything that we do. Having been and having, having been a part of the whole preschool scene, I understand the need for early word recognition, you know? recognition, you know, I understand the need for that, especially coming into this time and and what you have now with the with these young people, these scholars that are coming in, especially as preschoolers and kindergarteners, you have you have such a a fresh and clean slate of of children that are so hungry to learn and to to glean. And it takes individuals like yourself and so much of our staff that are passionate about the work that they're doing in order to make a program like this work. You can't just put this together and not have the the people that that have it in their heart to do. So I've long said this for many years is that I happen to be involved in two of the two of the careers, so to say, that are more callings than they are careers. I happen to, you know, I happen to be involved in ministry and involved in education. And those are things that can only only be successful with passion. So thank you for your passion.
Thank you.
Thank you for your passion. And 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 not just your passion, but your compassion because a lot of people have sympathy about certain things, but compassion means that you do something about what the issue is. And so thank you for that. And I'm looking forward to continued continued success. And and to that as well, let us know what we can do. Let us know what we can do, not just as a board, but even as individual individual members, if it's if it's to sit down and 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 read to the kids, if it's whatever, just let us know because we would love to. We would love to be involved in that. Maybe Mitch gave me the big eyes. I don't know what that was about. That was I don't know what that was about. We'll talk about that later. But but really, really, because again, we're one Middletown and and we're one we're one community and one boat. So Mr. Estrada, yes, sir?
Yeah, just a quick. So one thing that before I was lucky enough to get back on the board that sitting out there in the audience and and something that has always been at the top of my mind when people talk about Middletown and how much we have low test scores, especially at the elementary level. And what people need to remember, at least on the public side, is we, you know, would we love to see improved test scores day one? Every school district and every school board member around the state would like to see that. But more importantly is, we want to see growth. We want to know that the programs we're instituting are working in a positive direction. That for me, that's more important than the test scores. And I'll tell you why. People need to remember that we are a very unique school district. We're a small city school district for a reason. That's because we typically, like our brethren at Newburgh or Poughkeepsie or whatever, we take on the most challenging scholars in the state of New York. We have a higher percentage of students with disabilities than most school districts. We have a higher percentage of more ELL English language learners than most school districts in definitely in the Hudson Valley. So and those are replaced each and every year with new challenges. And the reason why is because we live in an affordable school district for many parents. So they come here and when you have the success that this district has had over the last 20 years in its programs, somebody who's coming into this country and they want their child to learn and they're learning because they don't know any English are bound to pick a school district that's proven to be successful and word on the street, oh, bring them there because, you know, they'll grow there. That happens each and every year. So our challenge is, it's not like we have, you know, these challenged students coming in, we teach them and then we're okay. No, they get replaced by more and more challenging students. So it will always be difficult for our district to have the same type of test scores as a Warwick or as a Monroe Woodbury or what have you, because it's just a totally different student demographic. So I what I say to people and, you know, it's a question that we see very often on the candidate forums, you know, what are you gonna do about the test scores at the elementary school level? Well, one of the answers to that is, we have a 90% graduation rate. So we're doing something right between the elementary school level when our test scores are done down and at the end of the rainbow when our students are getting ready to graduate. If we had a graduation rate that was 50% or 40% that aligned with those test scores, then that means we have a big problem. But we're graduating our students. And I'd venture to say that if we kept track of the students from that are graduating, whether they started in Middletown at the lower elementary school level or whether they just moved in at the last minute in high school or what have you, that you'd have two different results there. So I'm confident that once they're in the system here, that they're getting to the to the endpoint, which is making sure you're graduating and you have the ability to go on to college. And we have a great success story with our graduation rate, but that's because we've done every a lot of things right between the time they have the low test scores and the time they meet get over to the high school. So I we need to remember that it's all about growth each and every single year.
Yeah, and all you have to do is get out in your car or put a pair of sneakers on and walk around Middletown to see all of the growth, the new homes that are going up, the, you know, developments that are going up, the businesses that are coming to Middletown, the incredible amount of resource that the city is putting into the rebirth of that downtown area. And, you know, the school district is not the only component of it, but it is one of the things that individuals look to when they make a decision about where they're going to put their roots down and, you know, raise their families. And so you're absolutely right that this district is doing incredible things, moving things forward, and we will always have challenges, always have challenges. But look around, Middletown is a really special place and it feels good to be a part of that team. And speaking of teams, there are a lot of people, although Mrs. Hall and Mrs. Bowler are here this evening representing the group, this work came out of a lot of feedback, information sharing and data analysis, which included administrators from across levels, Mrs. Adoma leading the team and educators and families. So this is the result of all of that collaboration. So we want to make sure that we take time to acknowledge those incredible people and like our educators that are doing a really great job in classrooms every day of making our kids feel really special. So thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you so much, ladies. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to our committee reports. Policy Committee, we want to deal with Policy Committee tonight. I'm going to turn you into the hands of Mrs. Blumenau, who is the chair of our Policy Committee.
Thank you. Our Policy Committee has been working diligently over the past year to update the policy manual from 2021, 2022. Anyone who's looking for the full policy manual can find it on our website under Board Policies and you can find the you can find the the actual policies. But over the next couple of weeks, we're over the next couple of meetings, we're going to be approving new policies that we that needed to be updated through our Erie One Boses. So tonight, we're going to be approving, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Okay, here we are. So first, we need we need an approval to waive the first and second reading of the policies that are recommended by Erie One, the Erie One Audit.
Are we able to make a motion to waive the first and second on all of them at once? Or do we have to do them individually?
Yes.
We can do that. So I'll make that motion.
A second.
Any discussion? All right. Thank you. And you all have copies of those policies and updates marked. And so be it resolved in accordance with the audit of the ECSDM's policies by Erie One Boses and upon the recommendations of the Board of Education Policy Committee, the full board hereby adopts the following policies with the normal nominal revisions.
We we have to finish the motion to waive it.
I'll do a roll call.
Oh, we have to waive. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Finish the motion to waive.
Mrs. Yeah, Mrs. Blumenau?
Hi.
Mr. Perino? Mrs. Tobiasin? Mr. Freddie Williams? Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Hi.
Pastor Williams?
Here. Hi.
Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rhett? Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you for keeping us on track on the vote.
Thank you.
All right. So that being done, now we're going to approve the policy approve some of the policies that we have reviewed in the Policy Committee over the past year. So now I can read the 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 resolution. So be it resolved in accordance with the audit of the ECSDM's policies by Erie One Boses and upon the recommendations of the Board of Education's Policy Committee, the full board hereby adopts the following policies with the nominal revisions recommended by Erie One Boses and review by the Superintendent of Schools, the following policies. Fifty seven seventy six, fifty six seventy six, privacy and security for students' data and teacher and principal data. Fifty seven forty one is drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. Sixty one fifty is drug free workplace. Sixty one fifty one, alcohol, tobacco and drugs and other substances for staff. Seventy three twenty is alcohol, tobacco, drugs and other substances for students. May I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion?
Just a quick question on the one regarding bus drivers. Since we outsource our transportation, do they have to sign anything with the district that they're gonna follow the particular policy?
Yeah, within their annual contract is an expectation that they follow our policies and procedures. And so then we provide resources them to support them with, making sure that they understand what those changes are.
Thank you. And I had that same question, which is why some of these policies were went out to various administrators and just community. So, all right, very good. Thank you. So we have a we have a first and a second and no discussion. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call?
I'll do a roll call. Mrs. Blumenau?
Yes.
Mr. Perino? Ms. Tobiasin? Mr. Freddie Williams? Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Yes.
Pastor Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rhett? Thank you.
All right. So that was the first of many.
Yes.
So if you have any, as these policies are put into our our and you're gonna be uploading them weekly.
These policies can be found as we revise them and approve them. They're found on board docs and they're in a section called Policy Revisions. And they're for the public to view as well.
Yeah, and you can get to that. You can get to that from the website under Board Policies.
Correct.
Link to that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blumenau. So we we intend on, just for the board's knowledge, we intend on doing moving forward for the next couple of meetings, at least three to four of these policies that that the Policy Committee has been looking over and going back and forth over. We did a complete audit. And so we'll be moving forward on on many of these revisions to the policies and updates to the policies in accordance with with New York State. So thank you for all your hard work, Mrs. Blumenau. Appreciate that.
Thank you to our committee.
Yeah. Roundtable, Board Member Board Member Comments. Let's start, we'll do like we did before. We'll start with Mr. Estrada since he's sitting over there by himself.
Good. And I want to thank everybody for a great thoughtful meeting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams?
I have nothing. Everybody have a good evening.
All right. Mrs. Blumenau? Mr. Rhett?
Then it's Policy Committee. And it was very rewarding. I learned a great deal about the numbers, the concerns, and I'm looking forward to continue to be a part of that committee with those people. In particular, that was Janet Ferrera, as well as Linda Rivera. They gave a really good presentation. It was well represented, had members, all members. We had a principal on that committee as well as attendance monitor. We had a new student who just graduated from high school that was looking to get into the system, as well as social worker. So, you know, it was great to just really look at the policy. We look at the old policy and was looking at the areas of concern to see how that we can improve the policy and update it. So I'll keep you guys abreast on how that's going.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Perino?
Thank you. I I'd like to give a a quick shout out to Ed Estrada for bringing up something that I had brought up in the past, but it did not go anywhere. Maybe we can study it this year. And that is possibly having a high school student on the board. And again, this person would not be able to attend a session. There are different restrictions, but maybe we should study that in the near future. And if not this year, we should get our ducks in order and for next year. The other thing I'd like to do, I'd like to thank a couple of our board members. One of the members, I'm sorry, Vince Crescenzo. Vince served 12 years on the board and he accumulated 250 hours of of boardsmanship. He was a good good addition. He had some good ideas, many good ideas. He is also an advocate for youth at the in Family Corp. Vince holds a master's degree and he a special education teacher Boses for many, many years. So I want to thank him for that, for his service on the Board of Education. And I also want to thank Mrs. Tobiasin for her year as president. Mrs. Tobiasin, two master's degrees. She also has various administrative certificates and again, a very dedicated individual to the youth of Middletown. So I just want to thank those two people. And I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Freddie Williams?
Yep, I don't have much. Just I sound repetitive, but I'm excited about the the state of the district. This is my fourth year coming in humbled and excited about getting reelected. Thank you to the community and everyone that voted. Just from when I started on the board to where I am now, I've gained a lot of knowledge. And I want to thank the current board members and past board members for, you know, your input and your impression on me. And I'm looking forward, very excited to move forward with the current board that we have. And, you know, keep learning, you know, never stop learning. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I want to address two things tonight real quick. Mr. Perino, thank you for bringing that bringing that up about the student a student representative. I'd like to propose to this board that we we take some time to discuss and put together a an ad hoc committee that can research research the parameters of having a student a student representative on this board. There's so many different ways that different people do it. And I think we could we put a committee together and and work in conjunction with with our superintendent and administration. We can come up with a plan to increase student voice, student voice. I think it's really is a really important subject. Again, I won't go into it because about the LEED convention, but that was one of the major subjects at the Leadership in Education Conference that we attended last week. And I think that that's something I think all of us have kind of been looking along those directions. And I think now is a great opportunity for us to to kind of institute that and make it work for Middletown. The second thing I want to address is for our public, we're all aware of the unfortunate resignation of our of Mr. Crescenzo, which left a vacancy here at the table. We have we have, as a board, moved forward with opening it up to the public and receiving letters of interest. And we've completed the interviews. But I do want to make sure that the public knows that as as of tonight, we have not yet come to a final decision as to how where we're gonna go and what we're gonna move forward on. But that answer. as to how, where we're gonna go and what we're gonna move forward on, but that answer will be coming soon, and when it does come, we will make an announcement about it. And so I just wanted to make sure that we, we said something about that tonight, that we, we as a board are gonna move forward in order to fill this seat, but we have been deliberating. We have been deliberating, and so an answer has not yet been reached, but soon, soon. With that being said, I don't have anything else tonight. Thank you guys for a very, yes, sir?
Just one quick thing, I'd like if we can talk about maybe in the future meeting. On board docs at Boses, we utilize the voting option.
Yes.
Via the computer, and I think that would be really cool for us to try to think about doing.
Yeah.
Moving forward, and it's pretty efficient, too.
Absolutely. I think that's, I think that's, it's good to look, especially technology-wise, since we're such a technology-rich district, it's a good idea to kind of look forward, to maybe even for us, moving forward and those type of things, so, absolutely. We can have that, we can definitely have that conversation and talk about it and, and see where we go from there. If there's, if there's nothing else, again, thank you, everybody, for a good meeting. Thank you for the presentation, and our next board meeting, our next meeting will be on August the 31st. Am I right?
Twenty-first, no, John?
I'm right?
Is it thirty-first?
August the 31st is our next regular meeting.
Oh, a regular meeting.
Our next regular meeting, August the 31st, and so, other than that, thank you, thank you so much, bless you. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, moved and seconded by the Williamses, and thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Paul, I apply for-